I'm excited to let you know what they said.
We're live.
Okay, thank you. Is it there's something that we need to do? You know, and I don't know how other municipalities handle that or anything.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Rock side, you know, up to the owner really, but we could cite him too.
Right.
We talked about them last.
Yeah. Okay.
Looks and sound good.
All right. We are live, everybody.
We are live. Ready? Okay.
You guys ready?
Yep.
Everybody ready? Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. Right at seven. Okay, Angela, Angela won't be here, so I will do the roll call and do every everything else that she would normally do or try to do. So, second order of business is roll call. Jennifer Allen.
Here.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Here.
Mister Nielsen, Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All council here, along with myself, the mayor, and our law director, John Montello. Okay. Any comments related, excuse me, I'll back up a little bit. Like like to welcome any residents or non-residents that are watching our live stream. We are live streaming the meeting. So like to welcome everybody. Item three is comments related to agenda items. We will ask anybody has any comments as we go on to, so you don't have to feel that's the only place there. Okay, we'll wait a few minutes. Anything from anybody, Jennifer?
Not yet.
Like it? Our stream is always a little, there's a little delay, so we always will wait a couple of minutes or a minute or so. Okay. The next item is item four. And that's a motion to elect council president. I know, just to kind of give a little background, we have traditionally gone with council president for a couple of years. As far as electing it in this meeting, I think that's in Ohio revised code. It's the worded council president be elected in the first meeting of the year. So I don't know if that's something council has been discussing. That's their thing to do. I would like to just say happy new year to everybody. Thank council for a very good twenty twenty-two. I think it was a very productive year. We're certainly moving in the right direction. Doesn't mean we don't have other other work, a lot of other work ahead of us. I'd like to thank Jennifer Allen for last year for council president and all the council members as chairman of their committees. And I think everything went went pretty well. So I don't know. I'll leave it up to you guys for item four.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer Allen.
I'd like to nominate Brian Spitznagle for council president this year.
Second.
Second by Jen, second by Mary Brenner Miller. Vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations, Brian. Give you a little clap.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank Jennifer also.
Thank you.
For the last two years.
Yes, absolutely.
I would agree.
Mister Mayor?
She did work everybody and task everybody, but that's okay.
That's her job.
That's a good thing. Go ahead, Jennifer.
In speaking with Councilman Spitznagle, I asked him if he wanted me to come up with the committee meetings for the rest of the year again, and he asked me to. So I do have a list of those, and we can talk about that later, or I can email that out to everybody. The one thing that I thought would be good, and it would obviously be up to you and the rest of council, is if we had a finance meeting at the second C. O. W. before the second C. O. W. meeting every month, so that we stay on task with it every month, because quarterly it was getting away from us.
Sounds good.
So again, I have all those dates, and I can send out an email when we have all of the committees.
Thanks.
And Mister Mayor?
Yes.
As far as the committees go, we can finalize those. Either if everybody's good with where they're at, we can just say we're good tonight. Or if you'd like to think on it, and we can revisit it next week at the council meeting and establish the formal committees then, I'll leave that up to to council.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I'm fine with where I am, just from the way it was.
Photographs, same with me. I'm perfectly fine with the committee assignments that I have.
Well, Councilman Spitznagle, as council president, Spitznagle, do you want to remain as information and rec? Because you have two large projects. And if you do, I would be willing to remain as finance, which is that aspect.
That's fine with me. I'd like to do that, remain as rec because of the things going on there with the grant and helping Rob with the next grant, hopefully.
Right, and we're in the middle of a directory right now.
And we're in the middle of the directory, so yeah, that makes sense, just to keep those the way they are.
Yeah, so I would be fine with that. Are you good with yours?
Fine.
Okay, so we'll keep everything the same, and if you would please email everybody those, the dates, and if anybody has any issues with any of those dates, want to change those, we can talk about that next week, or just email us.
For this year, I switched again infrastructure and economic development.
Uh huh.
So infrastructure will be in March and October, and economic development will be in April and November. That's how we had it this past year.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to, if you could, we could have copies of that.
Yeah, no, I'll email everyone.
Just because during the meetings, I know that we've changed them in the past and, you know, so we, you know, we don't have a problem with times and dates like.
Right.
Okay.
We'll get them out. Thank you, everybody.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
The only other question I have is for Mister Montello, because I don't know if that's just been habit, that council president has covered the finance committee, or if that's written somewhere that we would need to make some sort of amendment for the, just for the year for that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's in Ohio revised code or not.
Oh, yeah, see, you have the rule with me. It will take me one second.
Okay.
I just thought so everything was formally done.
Yeah, I have a feeling of that too, and that's how it. You be coach here, if that's the case. I mean, does it?
Yeah, we can, we can work it out, or however it works out. The council president pro temp is a de facto member of all committees also.
Right.
Right.
President Pro Temp shall be ex so, but she is a member of every standing committee, of which she is, or she is not an appointed member, with authority to enter into deliberations, but without authority to vote. Maybe it's not. Maybe you just took it for granted. If not.
I just didn't know, because otherwise I'm left to make this.
If I find anything different, I'll let you know next week.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll work it out. Not a problem.
One other thing, Mister Mayor?
Yes.
For the committee meetings, you guys will see that it was the economic in November. I put for November fourteenth, because November seventh is election day. And traditionally, we don't have a meeting scheduled on that day, so I just kind of went with that from the beginning.
Oh, okay.
So. What does it say?
It does say that President Pro Temp shall be chairperson of the finance committee and one additional standing committee.
Okay, so we can, I guess I'm the chair of the finance committee then, and if you want to take information from it, you know, I'll be glad to work with you on the information committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so, because I'm going to give this the, I want to give it to Mary to put in the journal. So all we would do then, so we just would switch.
The chairs on information and finance.
That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
To two twenty point zero four, confederal committee, section E. Of our qualified.
Yeah, I just heard that question, because I thought, just so everything's on the up and up.
Yeah, we always say, you know, automatically it's, but I don't think we've ever, so that's, that's a good thing. Any questions on that, on the committees?
I will get this list to you, Mary, tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, that's fine. We got, the journal's not pulled out yet.
It's probably coming up soon though.
It is coming up soon. If we had it done that early, we were heading for instead. Does anybody have any questions related to committees? Any residents, any audience that is here, or anybody that's watching our live stream?
No questions on the live stream yet.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on. We can always come back if somebody has a question. Item six, legislation. The first item is resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, Rob Kalman, street commissioner. That is a resolution that per Ohio revised code, we have to appoint that position every year. I know, just in case residents were wondering, we researched that quite a few years ago about trying to make it every couple of years or three, but we couldn't, because it follows the Ohio revised code, and we have to do it every year. I would like to ask that council renews Mister Kalman for another year. He's done a good job, and I would ask that we could do that.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I would be willing to introduce that next week. My understanding is we would have to pass that as an emergency, because that's going to be our only council meeting in January, and Rob's contract begins February first.
Unless we wanted to have another meeting or special meeting, but I I think we're all probably in agreement to. Any questions related to that piece of that resolution? The term is from February first, twenty twenty-three through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Okay. Any questions from any residents relating to that item? Any on the live stream? We have item B, resolution twenty twenty-three dash two. That's Natalie Buck, recreation and community life director. Both of those positions are in the Ohio revised code, and they both fall in that same, the same thing about renewing them. I would ask that we, I feel Natalie's done a good job. I would ask that we renew her contract for another year.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Being the chair of recreation, I will, I would like to introduce that, please.
Okay. Any questions from the residents that are here, or anybody in the live stream?
Not anyone in the live stream.
Okay. Okay, item C, resolution twenty twenty-three dash three, sugrind Valley Engineering. That's another contract renewed every year. I know we did receive a memo that I did read in the record, well, some of it from December twelfth from Mister Gelati, asking for a rate increase for twenty twenty-three. And so you should have that letter. But I did want to make a point. I put a email in your mailbox yesterday along with a couple of spreadsheets Mister Gelati ran, and I thought it was kind of interesting. He just, he sent that over yesterday. And what he did, he compared the engineering fees to the reimbursement we received for each project. It's something that we haven't done in in the past, but he did it for the last two years. And if you look at twenty twenty-two, we've got reimbursed for sixty-three percent, almost sixty-four percent of what their their fees they charged through each project, from what I see here with this email. And then the year twenty twenty-one, eighty-six percent. But you see in the memo, he's kind of relating to that being higher due to the Dunham Road project. But I just thought that was good information, and I'd like to see us renew that contract. I think they're doing a great job. The team we put together to deal with our large, the draft project, sugrind Valley is very instrumental in that project, not just Mister Gelati, but the whole team there. Don Shihi, our former engineer, Joe relies on him, and some of the other members there who have done similar projects relating to the same size. So it's not just Joe Gelati with sugrind Valley Engineering. You can get a whole whole group there. They do about sixteen communities. They've done a lot of projects there, so I think it's very instrumental to retain them.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just had a comment.
Yeah.
I was reading today in Crane's Business, where they list their top companies, things like that, salaries, bonuses, CEOs, you know, stuff. And under engineering companies, sugrind Valley was listed as number fourteen out of the top fifty. So they were really given, you know, I thought, hey, good for us.
Yeah, right. No, exactly.
Really is a good company, so.
Good, good point.
No, I was just going to say, I would like to introduce this title.
Okay.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Just looking at these increases, it's really a sliding scale. And what's interesting is that actually the survey crew is going to get the biggest increase, not, you know, it's, it's not even the engineers. And those are the men, men or women in the field, so. But it's really not a huge increase.
Anybody have any questions related to the sugrind Valley engineering contract? Or the resolution, which is actually the contract?
No, Mister Mayor, just so the residents know, it, as Mary said, it's a sliding scale on the position, and it's about an average of five percent, which for some positions, it's like a two dollar increase.
And I was looking, I think we have, they haven't had an increase for two or, two or three years.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah. I thought Joe had it in here. I didn't want to give an exact, not exactly sure, but I think it was two years. Yeah. Okay. Any questions related to that? Item D is, well, before I, anybody here have any questions related to that item? Are anybody watching our live stream? How many people do we have on, Jennifer?
Twelve.
Well, that's good. That's a good, good group. Item D, resolution twenty twenty-three dash four, that's our yearly internet auction resolution. Have on here for, we have to pass every year. What it does is gives us municipality according to revised code, seven twenty-one dash one five D, the right to sell our property, cars, different things, used stuff. We go to usually govern, gov dot, what is it? Gov dot? Docu.
Auction dot gov.
Gov, something. We don't get a real lot, but we try to recycle most of our vehicles and most of our items. We do a great job, our service department, our mechanic, and running our stuff till they, you can't run it anymore, especially a lot of equipment. But this gives us the ability to sell our items.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I believe last year the police department sold two vehicles there for about fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I could find that out. I'm.
But I know that we have sold several things. And every penny helps.
Oh, you're not sure? Okay. Any questions related to that, twenty twenty-three dash four? For the residents? Just to kind of get back to Mister Montello's contract and Mister Mason's. Their good for this year. Theirs don't expire to the end of this year. Mister Jordan's doesn't expire unless we decide to, you know, wanted to, and just like him, opt out of it. So that, I think, what other contract, I think that's it. These were the only ones that we had to pass right now. He has any other? That's it, right? So we don't have anybody else on contract that renews? But I did look those up just to make sure. Those, those two. Let's see. Anybody have anything related to the legislation for next week? We'll have all those items on there.
Mary Coleridge.
Yes.
Just one question, for next week, all these items, when information is distributed, it will also include introduced by which council person? Written on the document.
The legislation.
The legislation.
Agreed.
Yeah. When we, we file that, we put that on there. Because I sign it, and then we put that, like, if you went back, every piece of legislation, it it has who introduced it. And then it gets.
But not, not written on the document itself.
No, it, we handwrite it in.
Okay, I mean, you're.
I mean, we could do, we could do that, but if, let's say, the only thing about, the only thing is if we put it ahead, I was thinking about this, because I remember we talked about this last week. So let's say we put it ahead, and someone's not here. I mean, it wouldn't matter. I guess we just scratch it off. But like, when, after the meetings, what happens is I have to sign that legislation. I sign that. Angela signs it, and then they put up here who introduced, right up here. You'll see, you go back, you'll see who introduced it. But it's handwritten. So you're saying to put it in there before it would be there when we, or we voted on it.
Yeah, you have multiple readings, and you know who introduced it, you know, that's all.
Yeah, and you know what? I guess why we never did it that way, just to talk, just why we're talking about it, is because we've never, we've always went through the legislation at the council meeting, and at that time, decided on who, you know, is going to introduce it. We've never done it in the C. O. W. meeting. You know what I mean? We have, you know, here and there, but that was the kind, but it doesn't matter. I mean, whatever you guys want to do, I mean, it's not worth, you know, it doesn't, either way. I'm just telling you, it does get filed with the name it has to, you know. Let me think about that. Let's think about that, not just me, all of us, you know, how we would, because the only thing I'm thinking, let's say we did put, you know, introduced by, and that person's not here, I mean, I guess we just scratch it off.
Well, even, even if the person's not here, you still know who was introduced by that person, even if somebody else at the meetings. I mean, no one even had, no one even may even have to say anything. Mayor actually has the document that says this was introduced by council person.
No, but you introduce it at the meeting.
It's true.
That's where the introduce comes from.
Right.
You introduce it, somebody seconds it, and then you vote on it.
Right.
That's what the, that's what the introduces. They want, we have to record who actually introduced that for some reason. I don't know. Just protocol that, but it's the inner, whoever introduces it at the meeting and reads, reads it. That's where, that's where that comes from.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Mister Whedon, Councilman Whedon, do you mean as if it was going for three readings? Whoever initially introduced it at the first reading is that?
Yeah, it would also apply second and the third, and that person would already be there. And even if that person's absent, comes to the meeting, it was introduced at the first meeting by.
But see, the only thing bad about that, so let's say you introduce at the first meeting, on that piece of legislation where I sign it, we put in who introduced it at that.
On the day of the vote.
I think that's where we'll have to clear up, the day of the vote. If that's the case, then it doesn't make, you know what I'm saying? But let's find out. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me or to you guys, you know what I mean? If it, that's fine. I mean.
And it's in the minutes of the prior meetings who initially talked about, you know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's in the minutes. Let me look in the journal. I don't think we put it in the journal.
And let's say.
We put the legislation in there, but.
If a piece of legislation goes for three readings.
Mm hmm.
Of course, somebody reads it once, that's in the minutes. Somebody reads it a second time, of course, that's in the minutes, we've read it. And then the third one that's actually voted on, that's the one that you're talking about, who introduced it. So it could be three different people. You know what I mean? That, that.
Oh, we've had that.
Introduced.
Yeah, we've had that. Yeah, we've had that. Well, let's, Jennifer, why don't you find, check that out, find that out. If there's no legality, then we'll just decide on how we want to do it.
Or to have some sort of record.
Why don't we do that?
I get where you're coming from, to, to have some sort of record on that document of who did that each time, right?
Because oftentimes, we have, it is a committee chair, not all.
Right.
It is a committee chair that introduces a piece of legislation that is related to that, that committee, but not all of it. Check it out and see, see if it's feasible.
Yeah. That's, we can, that's an easy fix.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Nobody said that they wanted to introduce the internet auction, just since we were talking about it.
Well, we can do that at the meeting too. I mean, that's.
Okay, now.
Yeah.
Figured we had the other three, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mary wants to then.
And one of the reasons could be too is, I mean, not that our committee's been so good, everybody's, does the research, they know, they're pretty comfortable with how they're voting. But you could change your vote from now and then too. You know what I mean? Maybe you don't want to introduce it at that time. You know what I mean? You could. I mean, the meeting's the meeting, and we've seen that. You know, not so much with this group in, in the past. I've seen that, Ryan's seen that. I mean, we have a great committee. I've been very fortunate to be mayor and chairman with a great committee, and you've been fortunate and other.
Witnessed it.
Yeah, so, you know. Yeah, so, you know, it's, but, but let's find that out, because it's kind of like the council president. Can't do it according to some point, and then we'll just do it, you know, work it out how we want to do it. Because it is nice for, nothing wrong with people knowing, too, I mean, whatever. Anybody have anything else related to those four items? Other business. Anybody have anything they want to talk about under other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the Rec Committee, we are going to have, I'm going to call a Rec Committee meeting, but we don't have the information that we need to have the meeting first. So when I get that information, February 7th. Before the COW, okay. So that's probably be the first Rec Committee meeting, February 7th, we'll plan on that. And that'll be before the COW. I had a visit by a resident today who had some information from Bedford that has a pickleball instructor. And we've been looking for one. So I had on my agenda today to go to the Event Center and talk with Mary and Natalie about the directory that we're also working on, Village Directory. And for those who are watching, I'll go off on a tangent here just for a second. Please fill out your directory information, if you'd like your name and information in the directory, please fill that out and get it into us. But Natalie did call Bedford, and she did get in touch with somebody at Bedford. I don't know all the details of that yet, and she said she did call, she found a few others. And she called them and left messages for them. So that's good news for that. And that is all I have for other business.
Yes, Jennifer.
For Councilman Spitznagle, the new residents since the last directory are going to be added in automatically.
Yes.
And, but if they do not want that information added in, they still need to fill out that form and say they want it removed. So just so the residents understand, if you're a new resident, it's going to be added in. And again, please fill out the form if you want something changed or removed, or
Correct, we don't put anybody's phone number or email address in there if they do not want it in there, so. Just because you didn't fill out a form, the information that goes in the directory is public information anyways, it's your name and address. And it is not published on the website at all. It's just a, if you're familiar, it's just a little book, booklet that goes to residents. And it's used quite frequently by our residents. They like it, and I like it, I use it quite frequently also. But if you want information in there also, please let us know.
Everybody wants to be in the book.
Part of history, I've got a stack of them, like
It's funny, sometimes I'll hear, well, they're not in the book. You know, like, they, they can't, they must not live in the village, they're not in the book. You know? But we do have a lot of residents that aren't in the book. I don't think my son was in the book, he didn't put it, somebody had to bug him, I, but. Anybody else have anything other, other business? I don't have anything else, maybe a few things, well. See. I'm not really got mayor's meeting at the end of the month. Talk about that next week. Still doing, I got some more interviews for Nancy's position. We went, re-advertised that, Lori's setting up four, we should pull four there. Nicole, it's with Angela on Friday, we're waiting, trying to get her computer, I would like to see that this week. So Nicole can start coming in here on a more regular basis, get her, you know, three days, or however she works it out. There.
Is your mayor's morning meeting on Tuesday, this month, Tuesday the 31st?
It's the last, I think it's a Wednesday, I'll tell you right now. There was a conflict, there was something on a normal date, mine is Tuesday the 31st, 9:00 AM. As you know, we did get the three TIPS filed. Got that done. Everything should be good with Smith and Albee, too, we're hoping they start moving, they're supposedly getting final prints together. Hope that starts breaking ground soon. The Coroner, as you see, is moving, moving along. Moving at a great place, you know, great pace. It's hard to believe, a little more than a year, and look where we are from. Acquiring the property, clearing the property, getting a grant for cleanup and erecting a building, it's you know what I mean, so. We're hoping to get some employees in there this year, so. Nothing, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if that, we had a chance to go up there and look, I had a chance to go up and look at the situation with the scrap, you know, how they were stockpiling the scrap. And I haven't heard from any of the residents or anything that, and I talked to the mayor about this, too. He hadn't heard anybody complain about trucks or anything, but the scrap piles are, they're probably two-thirds gone. So they're moving that stuff out of there, and it's, they're moving fast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I will say that Independence Construction and Independence Excavating were also both listed in Crane's.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're top, I think they're second.
As soon as maybe the weather breaks, we'll get, talk and get a chance to go back up there and get a feel, and, you know, have Matt Mott call and go over where they're at, too, and stuff. I do want to, now that the TIPS are filed, to have Matt Stowinski kind of give us a feel of what he sees, especially since we're going to be doing the budget soon, at least see what he says about projection, I mean, and that's exactly what it would be. But it will certainly help us plan what he thinks as far as what we will receive from the TIPS. We know at least NPK would probably could be something this year, whether Drawoff will be or not, but at least maybe give us an idea, so that's one of the things that we also, you know, so as you, as you said, we want to start having those finance meetings. As Jennifer has mentioned, we got the Lake Club contract to talk about in there, too. You know, just trying to look at some of Rob's capital improvements, so, some of the roads and stuff, so. I'm going to start getting that together, so we can put that together for that first finance meeting, and just give us a good idea on where we're at, or what we see, so we really have a good picture. Let me do the final budget here.
The first finance meeting that I have scheduled, I mean, council could always have it during a COW meeting, too, but specific financing scheduled on, for February 14.
And I'm hoping the survey, the equity survey for the employees is done, too. Because that's going to, you know, be some discussion. So. She's still has to meet with some of the departments. I think that's pretty much what I have. Does anybody have anything else under other business?
Are you trying to stretch this out?
I'm, I'm not trying to stretch it out, but I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, we got some time. It's, does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to ask us before we, I ask for an adjournment? Anybody watching the live stream?
Nope, there are no questions on the live stream yet.
Give it a couple of minutes, and then we'll, I'll ask for
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're sitting here, there was, one of the residents, for some reason, could not chat with us. If that resident is on, I'm wondering if they could try to chat and see if it works today while we're just waiting.
We're not going to say anything. Hopefully, Angela.
Yeah, that's right.
While, while we are here, I just, you know, we got great employees here, and it really, we got, got to see it show through our, when we had that cold weather and the bad snowstorm. I was out, went through quite a few communities, probably like a lot of us here, and our roads were the cleanest, even when it was, you know, salt wasn't doing it. You know, there was still snow on the roads, but we didn't have, you know, this much snow in it and stuff, so we're very fortunate to do a great job. Our hills are always clean, you know. We put down a lot of salt, but it's important, because you ever gone down Dunham Road Hill when it's slippery, I, yeah, you spin around, and sagamore, and, you know, it's
I've had trouble before just coming up from Dunham, coming up Alexander.
Yeah.
A lot of times, people get stuck there.
Mr. Mayor did type, can someone please reply, so we know the chat feature's working today, and Sean McCormick did reply almost immediately saying, live chat test.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, and with the Lake Club, we'll let them know to, you know, about the, when we'll talk, you know, we'll talk about the budget. So. Okay. I'd like to add, is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:42.
Second by Mr. Weedon. Vote on the motion, Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Weedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:42. Thank you, everybody. Everybody have a great weekend. Even though it's only Tuesday.
We are?
Just ending it now, because I just saw
Yeah.